Okay, good evening, everyone. It's, let me see what's the date today. January 16th, 2025. This is a meeting of the Wolfborough Budget Committee. And this is a continuation from a budget hearing last held on January 14th, 2025. What we're going to do tonight is we're going to be advised of another warrant article that the selectmen voted on last night. And then we're going to go through each warrant article and vote as a committee, whether to recommend or not recommend. Any more questions before we start? Any questions in the public? Okay, Jim, if you want to start in on the new warrant article, that'd be great. Oh, I'm sorry, I gotta do the pledge of allegiance. Yeah, thank you for reminding me. Steve, you want to lead us, please?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in the spirit of individual liberty, justice, and all.
Thank you for that kind reminder, Jim, I appreciate it.
You're welcome, Mr. Chairman. So I'll go ahead and read the article. Before I do that, just a couple of items. Are you on the mic? I hope so.
Is the mic on?
Yes.
It's on, I can hear.
Must be hard to hear, I'm sorry. Just a couple of items. These warrant articles are at review by legal and New Hampshire ERA, so there could be some changes as that takes place. This presentation tonight is just the warrant article, so it doesn't have the backup information to it. But the department heads are here to be able to answer questions that you may have. Last evening, the Board of Selectmen had a bond hearing on two bonds. One of them was a betterment assessment, which was removed, recommended not placed on the warrant, so it did not come forward. And the second one is Mill Street Sewer Pump Station upgrades, which I'll read in for you right now. The warrant article reads, "See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $900,000 for the purpose of paying for increased costs for Mill Street Sewer Pump Station upgrades as approved by warrant Article 15 in 2022 and warrant Article 17 in 2023, which is currently estimated at $3,143,000. Further authorize the issuance of $900,000 in additional bonds or notes for this project in accordance with the provisions of RSA 33, the Municipal Finance Act, and to further authorize the Board of Selectmen to issue, negotiate, sell, and deliver such bonds or notes, and to determine the rate of interest thereon, and the maturity and other terms thereof, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to participate in the state revolving loan fund, SRLF RSA 486:14, established for this purpose, and to allow the Board of Selectmen to accept such monies as become available from the federal and state governments, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to take any action or pass any other vote related thereto, and authorize the town manager to sign all documents related to this project. Estimated tax rate impact for 2025, zero cents per thousand of assessed valuation; 2026, zero cents per thousand of assessed valuation; 2027, three cents per thousand of assessed valuation. This was recommended by the Board of Selectmen last evening by a vote of 5-0, and it recommends a three-fifths majority to pass. This will be part of the state revolving loan fund, which means that the payments will not begin until the project is done. We're anticipating that project to be done late '26 into '27, and there is a possibility for loan forgiveness. Steve Randall can answer any questions you have relative to this project.
Thank you, Jim. And Steve, you're going to come up.
Good evening. This is a continuation of the project that was started back in '22. Initial construction estimates did not have a full scope of what the project is, that we do have now, coupled with a change in engineering and some delays due to that, is why we are looking at needing the additional $900,000. One of the things that was not factored in on the original estimate was the construction oversight needed by a third party, and that's coming in at $458,000 in itself. So that is all included in all of this pricing. We are looking to have, to put it out to bid around the first of February, with the bid opening the first of March, for an anticipated late summer/fall construction start. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
I have a couple of questions.
Sure, go ahead.
$3,143,000, is that the, are that the current cost, or is that the total of warrant Article 15 in 2022 and 17 in 2023?
So that is the total estimate of what the final project will cost. So there's a breakdown. Do we have the other slide?
All right. No, my only, then my question is, is the $900,000 part of the $3,143 that you're assuming?
Yes.
Okay.
I can give you that breakdown of the funding that's been approved to this date. In 2022, we approved $1,008,000. In 2023, we approved $455,000. In 2022, we received ARPA funds, and as well as bond monies proceeds from the RIV site in the amount of $672,000 that were applied to this. Reassignment of ARPA funds from the Port Wedland project, $108,000, making the total of funds available, $2,243,000, tracked out current estimate, brings it to $900,000.
Okay. Thank you.
Any more questions? Tom.
Your mention of loan forgiveness caught my attention. Can, is that for the whole project loan forgiveness, or?
So we have it on a portion of it, and initial conversations with DES is that we should be able to roll this 900 in. We can't proceed with that until after the vote, and we have the authority to borrow. We then can take it and submit to them and try to get that full package redone. So I don't, I don't have an exact number on how much of that forgiveness we're going to have right now.
And loan forgiveness is not a guarantee by any stretch of the imagination. We've been very fortunate with it over the past number of years, but it's not a guarantee.
Right. Thank you. I have an add-on question to Tom's question. Let's assume for the moment that loan forgiveness of some quantity is approved, and we get it. What happens to that money that is not spent, that is represented by the loan forgiveness? Where does it go? You know, the voters approve $3 million, and we get $1 million of loan forgiveness, let's say. What happens to that $1 million that really gets paid for, that the voters already approved? What happens to it?
We would have spent the money. What happens is they take it off the top of the loan.
Thank you. So that reduces our debt service?
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the committee? About questions from the public? Okay, thank you, Steve. Okay, now we're going to start either recommending or not recommending each warrant article. The first one we're going to do is the Mill Street Sewer Pump upgrades. Can I have a motion, either recommend or not recommend?
Move to recommend.
And a second?
Second.
This'll be a roll call vote. Everyone understand the warrant article? Any questions? Any discussion? Okay. Leanne, if you could do the roll call?
Yep. Bob Tuffler?
Yes.
Harold Paka? John McDonald?
Yes.
Tom Bell?
Yes.
Bob Mulholland?
Yes.
Brian Black?
Yes.
Matt Plash?
Yes.
Bob Loman?
Yes.
Steve Johnson?
Yes.
Brian DeChes?
Yes.
Vote to recommend, 10-0, 10-0-0.
Okay, the motion to recommend passes on a vote of 10 to 0. Okay, the next one will be the operating budget warrant article. Jim, do you think I need to read this, or?
I think it's probably a good idea, John.
Okay, thank you. This is the 2025 operating budget. Shall the town raise and appropriate, as an operating budget not including appropriations, by special warrant articles and other appropriations voted separately, the amount set forth on the budget posted with the warrant, or as amended by the vote on the first session, for the purposes set forth therein, this totaling is $35,943,677. Should this article be defeated, the operating budget shall be $33,650.63, which is the same as last year's operating budget, with certain adjustments required by previous action of the town or by law, or the governing body may hold one special meeting, and according to RSA 4013, 10, and 16, to take up the issue of revised operating budget only. Can I get a motion, either recommend or not recommend?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Everyone, yes, sir?
And I probably know the answer to this, I should know it, but I need clarification. Assuming that this budget goes through, everything's fine and wonderful, but let's assume, let me assume for the moment that a default budget occurs at the deliberative session.
Your mic is not on, I don't think.
Supposedly it is.
I can't hear you.
Nobody can hear.
I'll shout. I would like to know if a default budget occurs, what happens to the warrant articles that may or may not be approved? There it goes. May or may not be approved. How does it work?
So this is a standalone article. Therefore, if this fall fails, it would impact the operations of the town. However, all of the other warrant articles that are voted on, if they pass, that standalone funding, and we would execute those projects as approved or not approved by the voter.
Okay, so they're separate from the default budget act, action?
Correct.
Thank you.
Tom?
For the benefit of the vote, I believe the difference, if I recall correctly, between this $33,650 and the $33,300, which was the 2024 operating budget default, I believe, is the assessment cost for the tax?
I'm sorry, I did not follow the question. Can you repeat that?
The $33,650 for the purpose of this vote, compared to the default budget in the slide above, which is $33,300, is the cost of the tax assessment, which we're going to talk about later?
That is correct. So the difference would be an increase of $349,264 from the current budget.
Thank you.
Any other questions? What we've got to remember is, the actual cost, the cost to run the town is $20,570,784. That's the operating budget to run the town. The extra money that's in there is to, and Jim, again, correct me, is to buy electricity and a few other things that we generate revenue from. Is that correct?
Correct. The $20 million portion of this is the general fund operating budget, which is utilized based on the taxes that are created. The balance is the electric fund budget, sewer fund budget, the water fund budget, and the Pop Whalen budget. Those four budgets are paid for by the user fees. I will note, there is an inner fund transfer that does take place in the operating budget to pay for the sewer capital, but all the operational costs are broken out into those separate entities, and it's approximately $20 million to run the general government of the town.
Another quick question. Isn't part of that $20 million probably like $2 million that we use to pay for the buildings and construction projects that we've done? Isn't that included in the budget also?
So, yes, the debt service is included in this budget. We had an increase this year of about $500,000 in debt service. I would also note that the other big, one of the other big drivers in this is ambulance increases, which are now in the operating budget for our contracted ambulance service. That's another $500,000 increase on the general fund.
Any other questions? Okay, if everyone understands the warrant article for the operating budget, should we do a roll call vote? Leanne, please.
Bob Tuffler?
Yes.
Harold Paka?
Yes.
John McDonald?
Yes.
Tom Bell?
Yes.
Bob Mulholland?
Yes.
Brian Black?
Yes.
Matt Plash?
Yes.
Bob Loman?
Yes.
Steve Johnson?
No.
Brian DeChes?
Yes.
So 8, 2, 0.
Okay, the motion to recommend passes, 8 to 2. Okay, let's move on. The next one is the ambulance service non-binding referendum. Are you in favor of the town of Wolfborough establishing a fire department-based 9/11 ambulance service to be effective January 5, 2027, as outlined below? The program will authorize funding through separate warrant articles in 2025 and 2026. All funds outlined will be above and beyond the current fire department budget and staffing as proposed in 2025. Expenses for 2025 are $816,223, as outlined in 2025 warrant article. We don't have a number yet. Expenses for the 2026 are estimated at $1,402,905, which includes staffing costs as outlined in the 2025 article, which we don't have. Funding to purchase new fully-equipped ambulance, hiring three additional employees, which includes wages, benefits, and required equipment. These actions will replace the town of Wolfborough in a position to provide fire department-based 9/11 ambulance service effective January 1, 2027. Expenses for 2027 estimated to be $1,105,559. These funds, combined with the existing fire department budgets and staffing, will provide the town of Wolfborough with three management employees, 18 full-time employees, and two fully operational ambulances. Further effective January 1, 2027, the town of Wolfborough no longer contract with a privately operated ambulance service, which is in the 2025 budgeted. Can I get a motion to recommend or not recommend?
Second.
Second, okay. Any discussion?
Need any more explanation as to why, how that relates to the next?
Can you get your mic?
Question is if there's, if this is a good opportunity to explain the difference between the, this warrant article and the next? Let me get to the right page.
I have 18 and 19.
Okay.
The one you just read.
All right.
You want it?
I'm just wondering if this is a good opportunity to explain the non-binding referendum warrant article as compared to the next warrant article? Which deals with funding the ambulance.
So this, the purpose of this warrant article is to inform the Budget Committee, the voters, and the community that the next warrant article that you vote on, which is the funding for 2025, that is not where it stops. That, this warrant article was recommended to bring forward so that we can inform the Budget Committee, and we can inform the voters as to what these ongoing costs are going to be over the next couple of years to get this program up and running in a phased approach. So, by the letter of the law, you don't necessarily have to vote on this, but I think it's a really good idea that you weigh in, because if all of a sudden this article does not pass, that gives itself and the Board of Selectmen an opportunity to sit down and have a real hard conversation about exactly what we're going to do over the next year. And if the voters say that they don't like this, and that, that we need to make an informed decision about continuing with a contracted service. So, I think that the chief and his ad hoc committee have done a great job in developing a program. This has taken a year and a half to get in place, and it's going to take a couple more years to implement. And I think that this is the best way to do this, so that everybody in the town knows what's going on over the next couple of years, and what those impacts are going to look like.
Thank you, Jim. I just, thinking like, there's a voter that might not be on top of everything that's going on, and at first glance, these two articles might find it a little confusing.
Agreed, and I, that, for us, is the hard part, is getting the amount of information out, that we can be transparent as we possibly can to the voters as to what it's actually going to cost. And I do think that the bulk of our voters are well-informed as to what they're voting on when they go in that voting booth. Yet, there are some that don't. But I think the bulk of our voters have a pretty good handle on what they're voting on.
Thank you, Jim. Any more discussion?
John, I have just something to back up.
Sure.
Jim. The ambulance, the ad hoc ambulance committee also is willing to speak to any group that would, would like to hear from us, so we could better explain this. It is somewhat confusing, so I just, I just wanted to put that out there, that, you know, we'd be willing to speak with any group.
Thank you, Bob. Anyone else?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
In my considered opinion, for whatever it's worth, I don't think this is all that confusing. I think this non-binding referendum is a necessity for everybody to understand what's coming down the pike in '26 and '27. We already know what '25 is, because that's the next warrant article. What we decided to do from an ad hoc committee point of view was to formulate a warrant article that would inform the public, the voters, and everybody else in town, what the ongoing costs are, what the, what the cost of the, of the staged implementation of this ambulance program is going to cost. This is something that I don't think, I can't remember any time we've ever done this on any major project, that goes over multiple years. This is the first time we've done a, okay, folks, here's what's coming next year and the year after. I think it's the first time, and so it may be a little confusing to people, but I think it's pretty clear that the transparency is needed.
Thank you, Bob. Anybody else? Okay, Leanne, if you can do a roll call vote, please.
Bob Tuffler?
Yes.
Harold Paka?
Yes.
John McDonald?
Yes.
Tom Bell?
Yes.
Bob Mulholland?
Yes.
Brian, Brian Black?
Yes.
Matt Plash?
Yes.
Bob Loman?
Yes.
Steve Johnson?
Yes.
And Brian DeChes?
Yes.
10-0, to recommend.
Okay, the motion to recommend passes, 10 to 0. Let's move on. Okay, this is the fire-based ambulance service. To raise and appropriate $816,223 to establish a fire-based ambulance service for the town of Wolfborough. Authorize the Board of Selectmen to apply for, obtain, and accept federal, state, and/or any other aid, grants, and donations, if any which may be available for said project. That may reduce the appropriate sum of $816,223, and to comply with all the laws applicable, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to take any other actions or to pass any other vote relative thereto, and to authorize the town manager to sign any relating documents. The plan is to transition away from the current contracted ambulance service. The first year of the plan is, hire a deputy chief paramedic with all benefits as of April 1, 2025, cost of $124,785. Hire three firefighters and EMS personnel as of July 1, 2023, cost $228,605. Operating expenses for the above four new hires, $93,833. Purchase a vehicle for the deputy chief paramedic, $75,000. Purchase a fully-equipped used ambulance, $294,000. Can I get a motion to recommend or not recommend?
Motion to recommend.
And a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay, Leanne, when you're ready, roll call vote, please.
Bob Tuffler?
Yes.
Harold Paka?
Yes.
John McDonald?
Yes.
Tom Bell?
Yes.
Bob Mulholland?
Yes.
Brian Black?
Yes.
Matt Plash?
Yes.
Bob Loman?
Yes.
Steve Johnson?
Yes.
Brian DeChes?
Yes.
Pass, 10-0.
Okay, the motion to recommend passes by a vote of 10-0. Next one is the town road upgrades. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $900,000 for the purpose of upgrading and engineering town roads and drainage systems. This appropriation is non-lapsing pursuant to RSA 32:76, and shall lapse on December 31, 2016, or upon the completion of the project, whichever occurs first. Can I get a motion to recommend or not recommend?
I make a motion, I recommend.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing that the motion is to recommend the town road upgrades. Roll call, please.
Bob Tuffler?
Yes.
Harold Paka?
Yes.
John McDonald?
Yes.
Tom Bell?
Yes.
Bob Mulholland?
Yes.
Brian Black?
Yes.
Matt Plash?
Yes.
Bob Loman?
Yes.
Steve Johnson?
Yes.
And Brian DeChes?
Yes.
10-0, pass.
Motion to recommend town road upgrades passes on a vote of 10 to 0. Okay, River Street rebuild and water main replacement. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $350,000 for the purpose of upgrading River Street. Funds shall be utilized for engineering fees, stormwater drainage system, and water main upgrades. The repair of several sewer lines rebuilding River Street. $150,000 from the one underpriced fund shall be used for the purpose of engineering and replacement of vintage water main pipes which service River Street. $200,000 from the general taxation shall be the purpose of engineering and making repairs to existing sewer lines in River Street, stormwater drainage, and rebuilding the River Street. The appropriation is non-lapsing pursuant to RSA 32:76, and shall lapse on December 31, 2026, or upon completion of the project, whichever occurs first. Can I get a motion to recommend or not recommend?
Motion. Motion to recommend.
In a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Question?
Yes, sir.
If I read this correctly, what we're, the net-net of this is the $200,000 from general taxation that actually is what represents what, what we're actually going to get hit with. Is that correct?
That is correct, and if you look at the tax rate impact, that is how it is calculated, being 25, a penny per 25,000.
I assume that, but I just wanted to make it clear to everybody watching that that's what's going to happen.
Anything further? Okay, the motion is to recommend the River Street rebuild and water main replacement. Roll call vote, Leanne, please.
Bob Tuffler?
Yes.
Harold Paka?
Yes.
John McDonald?
Yes.
Tom Bell?
Yes.
Bob Mulholland?
Yes.
Brian Black?
Yes.
Matt Plash?
Yes.
Bob Loman?
Yes.
Steve Johnson?
Yes.
Brian DeChes?
Yes.
Motion passes, 10-0.
Okay, the motion to recommend River Street rebuild and water main River Street rebuild and water main replacement passes on a vote of ten to zero. Okay, the next one is Melody and Kennison Island Reconstruction. To see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate the sum of $525,000 for the purpose of reconstruction of the overhead electrical distribution system on Melody and Kennison Island, which has obliged power to approximately 40 customers. This project will include new pole structures, 15K rated conductors, insulators, transformers, service conductors, and associated trimming to reduce outages and safety concerns at this location. The appropriation is non-lapsing pursuant to RSA 32:76 and shall lapse on December 31st, 2026 or upon the completion of the project whichever occurs first. The project will be paid for by the municipal enterprise fund and will not result in any increase in the tax rate. Can I get a motion to recommend or not recommend?
So moved.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? When you're ready, Leanne, a roll call vote, please.
Yep. Bob Tuffler.
Yes.
Harold Packer. John McDonald.
Yes.
Tom Bell.
Yes.
Bob Mulholland.
Yes.
Brian Black.
Yes.
Matt Plash.
Yes.
Bob Loman.
Yes.
Steve Johnson.
Yes.
Brian DeChes.
Yes.
Motion passes, ten zero.
Okay, the motion to recommend Melody and Kennison Island Reconstruction passes on a vote of ten to zero. Okay. Armory Interior Ceiling to see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate the sum of $100,000 for the purpose of repairing the interior ceiling within luxury apartment garage will consist of an open cathedral-style roof with battening insulation covered in Tyvek construction wrap. The Tyvek is a vix to wood strapping, which are held in place between the horizontal structure and steel, steel purlings. Age has resulted in deterioration of the wrap that caused the wrap strapping and insulation to dislodge and fall in places. The proposed is to apply metal sheathing style steel roofing panels with associated support structures over the Tyvek material installation to provide a code-compliant, stable, and aesthetically presentable finish. The appropriation is non-lapsing pursuant to RSA 32:76 and shall lapse on December 31st, 2026 or upon the completion of the project whichever occurs first. This project will be paid municipal electric enterprise fund and will not result in any increase in the tax rate. Can I get a motion to recommend or not recommend?
Move to recommend.
A second?
Second.
Excuse me.
Yes, sir.
I actually wanted to raise the question, the same question for the prior Warren article for, as Brian says, maybe the uneducated voter. Can we explain to them the lack of a tax impact? And what or where does the municipal electric fund, enterprise fund, come from? And why is money spent not affecting anybody? Sure. So as an enterprise fund, the electric department in particular, they create significant enough revenue where they're able to actually have a very healthy fund balance at the end of each year as a result of the rates that the payers pay for their electric. As a result of the efficiencies within that operation, there is no tax rate impact for this operation. However, with that said, just want to remind everybody that we do charge the municipal electric department a administrative allocation for municipal support. So we actually get additional revenue from the electric department for that administrative allocation. And we also receive additional funds from them in a payment in lieu of taxes for their plant throughout town. Department is very well-run, has an excellent rate structure, excellent capital project planning method. And this is easily absorbed without any impact to the electric rates as it's built in. Thank you.
Jim, do we also, at one time, didn't we rent the building, the armory, to the electric company?
We do rent the building to them. I believe it's $18,000 a year that they pay in rent to the town for utilization of the building.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, seeing then, can we do a roll call, please, Leanne?
Bob Tuffler.
Yes.
Harold Packer. John McDonald.
Yes.
Tom Bell.
Yes.
Bob Mulholland.
Yes.
Brian Black.
Yes.
Matt Plash.
Yes.
Bob Loman.
Yes.
Steve Johnson.
Yes.
And Brian DeChes.
Yes.
Vote to recommend passes, ten zero.
Okay, the motion to recommend the Armory Interior Ceiling passes, ten to zero. Okay, Library Solar Project to see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate the sum of $173,381 for the purpose of installing solar array and associated equipment on the Wolfboro Public Library. The sum of $52,014 will be from taxation with the balance of the funds for this project to be through the acceptance of at least $121,367 from grants, donations, and rebates. Can I get a motion to recommend or not recommend this Warren article?
Move to recommend. Second.
Second. Okay, discussion?
Yes, I do have a question.
Yes, sir.
The $121,367,000 that's mentioned here, grants, donations, and rebates, do we have that money at hand?
That money has been committed for the project. I would also note that the $52,014, we are hopeful that we will be receiving a grant through the Inflation Reduction Act to pay for the balance of this project. However, receipt of those funds is twelve to eighteen months minimal. And right now, it's not guaranteed, so we had to budget that. If we do receive those funds, it would be applied to the fund balance.
Thank you.
Jim, I have a question. Do we have any projections as far as what the installed units will be of benefit of using the cost of the library's electric?
Yeah, so on an annual basis over the past four years, the library has floated between $11,000 and $14,000 a year for their electric service to the building. So they anticipate those costs going away with the installation of this system. Allison Rutley is here. If you have more specific questions, she is able to answer them. But I think that answers what you're looking for.
That's sufficient.
John.
Yes, sir.
So for people at home in layperson's terms, it's a four-year break even. When our electric bill disappears from the library in four years, we will start receiving benefits from having the solar project.
Thank you, Brian. Any other questions or comments? Okay, Leanne, when you're ready, roll call vote, please.
Bob Tuffler.
Yes.
Harold Packer. John McDonald.
Yes.
Tom Bell.
Yes.
Bob Mulholland.
Yes.
Brian Black.
Yes.
Matt Plash.
Yes.
Bob Loman.
Yep.
Steve Johnson.
Yes.
Brian DeChes.
Yes.
Vote to recommend passes, ten zero.
Okay, Library Solar Project passes. Recommendation is to recommend, ten to zero. Okay, Lib Museum Restoration to see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate the sum of $350,000 for the purpose of engineering and stabilizing repairs to the museum building and to secure cost estimates for further building renovations and repairs. This appropriation is non-lapsing pursuant to RSA 32:76 and shall lapse on December 31st, 2026 or upon the completion of the project whichever occurs first. Can I get a motion to recommend or not recommend?
I'll make a motion to recommend this Warren article.
I'll second it.
Okay, any discussion? Okay. When you're ready, Leanne, the motion is to recommend the Lib Museum renovation, restoration, excuse me.
Bob Tuffler.
Yes.
Harold Packer.
No.
John McDonald.
Yes.
Tom Bell.
Yes.
Bob Mulholland.
No.
Brian Black.
Yes.
Matt Plash.
Yes.
Bob Mulholland.
No.
No, I'm sorry, Bob Loman.
No.
I apologize. Steve Johnson.
No.
And Brian DeChes.
Yes.
Okay, so we've got one, two, three, four, five, six, six yeses and four noes. So motion to recommend passes, six to four.
Okay, the Lib Museum Restoration passes as recommended on a vote of six to four. Okay, next one is the American Federation of State and County Municipal Employees Contract. To see if the town will vote to appropriate the cost item included in the city year collective bargaining agreement reached between the Board of Selectmen and Local Number 534 of the American Federation of State, County, Municipal Employees, which calls for the following increases in salaries and benefits at current staffing levels. 2025 wages, $128,928. Benefits, $27,110 for a total of $156,38. 2026 wages, $131,768. Benefits, $28,532 for a total of $160,300. 2027 wages, $120,036. Benefits, $29,734 for a total of $149,770. And further to raise appropriate the sum of $156,038 for the current year, such sum representing the additional cost attributable to the increase in wages and benefits required by the new agreement over that would be paid at current levels. Can I get a motion to recommend or not recommend?
Chairman, I move to approve.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Seeing then, the motion is to recommend the American Federation of State, County, Municipal Employees. Any roll call vote, please?
Bob Tuffler.
Yes.
Harold Packer. John McDonald.
Yes.
Tom Bell.
Yes.
Bob Mulholland.
Yes.
Brian Black.
Yes.
Matt Plash.
Yes.
Bob Loman.
Yes.
Steve Johnson.
No.
And Brian DeChes.
Yes.
Passes nine to one.
Okay, the motion to recommend the AFS CME Union Contract passes on a vote of nine to one. Okay, the Police Union Contract to see if the town will vote to approve the cost item included in the city year collective bargaining agreement reached between the town and Local Number 39 of the New England Police Benevolent Association, which calls for the following increases in wages and benefits at current staffing levels. 2025 wages, $40,086. Benefits, $11,857 for a total of $51,943. 2026 wages, $44,881. Benefits, $13,299 for a total of $58,180. 2027 wages, $51,783. Benefits, $15,353 for a total of $67,136. And further to raise appropriate the sum of $51,943,43 for the current year, such sum representing the additional cost attributable to the increases in wages and benefits required by the new agreement over those that were repaid at current levels.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, thank you. Motion to recommend, Tom? Okay. Any discussion? Okay, seeing then, the motion to recommend the Police Union Contract. Roll call vote, please.
Bob Tuffler.
Yes.
Harold Packer. John McDonald.
Yes.
Tom Bell.
Yes.
Bob Mulholland.
Yes.
Brian Black.
Yes.
Matt Plash.
Yes.
Bob Loman.
No.
Steve Johnson.
No.
And Brian DeChes.
Yes.
Vote to recommend passes eight to.
Okay, the motion to recommend the Police Union Contract passes eight to two. Okay, Police Replacement Vehicle. Two. To see if the town will raise an appropriate the sum of $125,274 for the purpose of purchasing two police vehicles and for installation of ancillary vehicle equipment and $13,000 from the Police Detail Revolving Fund created by Article 23 in 2006, which has accumulated from special details with remaining balance of $112,274 to come from taxation. Can I get a motion to recommend or not recommend?
Motion to approve.
Okay, any discussion concerning the police replacement vehicles? Okay, the motion is to recommend Article Police Replacement Vehicles. Roll call, please, Leanne.
Bob Tuffler.
Yes.
Harold Packer. John McDonald.
Yes.
Tom Bell.
Yes.
Bob Mulholland.
Yes.
Brian Black.
Yes.
Matt Plash.
No.
Bob Loman.
No.
Yes.
Brian Duches.
Yes.
Motion to recommend passes eight, two, zero.
Okay, the motion to recommend the police replacement vehicles passes on a vote of eight to two. Okay, the next one is purchase police body cameras. To see if the town will vote to raise appropriate the sum of one hundred two thousand, three hundred thirty-nine dollars, to purchase fifteen police body cameras for all active officers, authorize the Board of Selectmen to apply for, obtain, and accept federal, state, or other aid, grants, and donations, if any which may be available for said project, it may reduce the sum of one hundred two thousand, three hundred thirty-nine dollars, and to comply with all the laws after vote two, said purchase, and authorize the Board of Selectmen to take any other actions or to pass any other vote relative thereto, and to authorize the town manager to sign any relating documents. This appropriation is non-lapsing pursuant to RSA Thirty-two, colon, seven, six, and shall lapse on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six, or upon completion of the project whichever occurs first. This appropriation will come from taxation. Can I get a motion to recommend or not recommend?
Motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the one thing I didn't get in the public hearing, I may have missed it, is there, what is the cost and/or situation for storage of said camera video?
Captain, do you want to come up, or?
Yeah, Captain Mark Libby, Wolfborough PD. The storage has changed since we've started this way back, looking at body cameras, it's all in the cloud and it's with Axon. So, there's nothing with the town of Wolfborough. Yep.
Thank you, Captain. Anything else? Okay, the motion is to recommend purchase of police body cameras, a roll call vote, please, Leanne.
Bob Toffa.
Yes.
Carol Packer. John McDonald.
Yes.
Tom Bell.
Yes.
Bob Mulholland.
Yes.
Brian Black.
Yes.
Matt Plash.
Yes.
Bob Loman.
Yes.
Steve Johnson.
Yes.
Brian Duches.
Yes.
Vote to recommend passes ten, zero.
Okay, the motion to recommend the purchase of police body cameras passes on a vote of ten to zero. Municipal reevaluation. To see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate two hundred thirty, thirty thousand dollars to meet our constitutional and statutory requirements to perform a municipal reevaluation assessment, to ensure assessments are full and true, valued every fifth year. Per State of New Hampshire RSA seventy-five, colon, eight, dash, A, reevaluation was last performed in twenty twenty. Can I get a motion to recommend and not recommend?
Motion to recommend.
I'll second it.
Okay, seeing then, the motion is to recommend the municipal reevaluation, and Leanne, roll call vote, please.
Bob Toffa.
Yes.
Carol Packer.
No.
John McDonald.
Yes.
Tom Bell.
Yes.
Bob Mulholland.
Yes.
Brian Black.
Yes.
Matt Plash.
Yes.
Bob Loman.
No.
Yes.
And Brian Duches.
Yes.
Vote to recommend passes eight, two.
Okay, the motion to recommend the municipal evaluation passes eight to two. Okay, evaluation repairs of the small sewer pump station. To see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate the sum of one hundred thousand dollars to perform an evaluation to dictate the most efficient path forward for scheduled repairs, replacement, and maintenance. This appropriation is non-lapsing pursuant to RSA Thirty-two, colon, seven, six, and shall lapse on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six, or upon the completion of the project whichever occurs first. This appropriation will come from taxation. Motion to recommend or not recommend?
I'll recommend it. I'll make a motion to recommend it.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay, seeing then, this would be a roll call vote to recommend the evaluation repairs of small sewer pump stations. Leanne, please.
Bob Toffa.
Yes.
Carol Packer. John McDonald.
Yes.
Tom Bell.
Yes.
Bob Mulholland.
Yes.
Brian Black.
Yes.
Matt Plash.
Yes.
Bob Loman.
Yes.
Steve Johnson.
Yes.
Brian Duches.
Yes.
Vote to recommend passes ten, zero.
Okay, the motion to recommend the evaluation repairs of small sewer pump stations passes on a vote of ten to zero. Wastewater Treatment Plant Capital Reserve Fund. To see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate the sum of one hundred seventy-five thousand dollars to be added to the existing wastewater treatment plant capital reserve fund, which as of December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, has a balance of two hundred twenty-seven thousand, nine hundred twenty-one dollars. These funds are under the custody of the trustee of the trust funds, where the selectmen designated as agents to expend the capital reserve fund. The appropriation will come from taxation. Can I get a motion to recommend or not recommend this?
Move to recommend.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Pennyall, the town manager, has been kind enough to honor my request of last night and has given me the backup for that one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars that I questioned. And it seems reasonable to me, so.
So, I'll just read that in, John, so that everybody's aware of it. The current balance in that account is two hundred and twenty-seven thousand, nine hundred and twenty-one dollars. In twenty twenty-four, we have fifty-five thousand, one hundred and twelve dollars encumbered. Our twenty twenty-five request is one hundred and seventy-five thousand. That'll make a balance in that account of three hundred and forty-seven thousand, eight hundred and nine dollars. Proposed work for the upcoming year includes electrical upgrades, fifty thousand dollars, aeration blower and valve work, fifteen thousand dollars. Couple of years ago, you may recall, the catwalk failed at the retention pond. We need to design that. That's fifty thousand dollar design. Spray irrigation work, fifty thousand. RIB pump rebuild for twelve thousand, and the plant evaluation, as we discussed, for seventy-eight thousand dollars. With that said, when that money's spent, we will have a balance of ninety-two thousand dollars left in the account, and knowing full well that we've got catwalk repairs and additional work that needs to be done.
Thank you, Jim. Any other questions? Seeing none, the motion is to recommend the wastewater treatment plant capital reserve fund funding. Leanne, please.
Bob Toffa.
Yes.
Carol Packer. John McDonald.
Yes.
Tom Bell.
Yes.
Bob Mulholland.
Yes.
Brian Black.
Yes.
Matt Plash.
Yes.
Bob Loman.
Yes.
Steve Johnson.
Yes.
Brian Duches.
Yes.
Vote to recommend passes ten, zero.
Okay, the motion to recommend the wastewater treatment plant capital reserve fund passes on a vote of ten to zero. Pressure relief valve involved for South Main Street Water Tower. To see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate the sum of one hundred thousand dollars to replace the existing globe valve or the pressure relief valve, and excessively valve to increase the fire flow in the South Main Street zone. A new valve is needed so the valve can be accessible, serviceable, and kept out of the water table, and safe. This appropriation is non-lapsing pursuant to RSA Thirty-two, colon, seven, six, and shall lapse on December twenty-third, thirty-first, twenty twenty-six, or upon the completion of the project whichever occurs first. This project repaid by the One Enterprise Fund will not result in any increase in the tax rate. Motion to recommend or not recommend?
Move.
Okay, second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Questions? Okay, seeing then, the motion to recommend pressure relief valve involved for South Main Street Water Tower. Leanne, please.
Bob Toffa.
Yes.
Carol Packer. John McDonald.
Yes.
Tom Bell.
Yes.
Bob Mulholland.
Yes.
Brian Black.
Yes.
Matt Plash.
Yes.
Bob Loman.
Yes.
Steve Johnson.
Yes.
Brian Duches.
Yes.
Motion passes. Ten, zero.
Okay, the motion passes to recommend the pressure relief valve involved for South Main Street Water Tower, a vote of ten to zero. Okay, water treatment plant upgrades. To see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate the sum of one hundred thousand dollars to continue yearly maintenance of the water treatment plant facility. This appropriation is non-lapsing pursuant to RSA Thirty-two, colon, seven, six, and shall lapse on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six, or upon the completion of the project whichever occurs first. This project repaid by the One Enterprise Fund will not have any effect or may result in an increase in the tax rate. Can I get a motion to recommend or not recommend?
Motion to recommend. Second.
Second, okay. Any discussion? Okay, seeing then, the motion is to recommend the water treatment plant upgrades. Leanne, please.
Bob Toffa.
Yes.
Carol Packer. John McDonald.
Yes.
Tom Bell.
Yes.
Bob Mulholland.
Yes.
Brian Black.
Yes.
Matt Plash.
Yes.
Bob Loman.
Yes.
Steve Johnson.
Yes.
Brian Duches.
Yes.
Motion passes ten, zero.
Okay, the motion to recommend the water treatment plant upgrades passed on a vote of ten to zero. Okay, Public Works Vehicles and Equipment Replacement Capital Reserve Fund Funding. To see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate the sum of three hundred and eighty thousand to be added to the existing Public Works Vehicles and Equipment Capital Reserve Fund, which as of December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, has a balance of one hundred eighty-four thousand, eight hundred and eighty-eight dollars. These funds are under the custody of the trustee of the trust funds, where the selectmen designated as agents to expend. Can I get a motion to recommend or not recommend this Warren article?
Motion to recommend.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, seeing then, the motion is to recommend Public Works Vehicles and Equipment Replacement Capital Reserve Fund Funding. Leanne, please.
Bob Toffa.
Yes.
Carol Packer.
No.
John McDonald.
Yes.
Tom Bell.
Yes.
Bob Mulholland.
Yes.
Brian Black.
Yes.
Matt Plash.
Yes.
Bob Loman.
Yes.
Steve Johnson.
Yes.
Brian Duches.
Yes.
Motion to recommend passes nine, one.
Okay, the motion to recommend the Public Works Vehicles Equipment Replacement Capital Reserve Fund Funding passed on a vote of nine to one. Abenaki Ski Area Capital Reserve Fund Funding. To see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate the sum of thirty-two thousand dollars to be added to the existing Abenaki Capital Reserve Fund, which as of December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, had a balance of thirty-three thousand, thirty dollars. These funds are under the custody of the trustees of the trust fund, where the selectmen designated as agents to expend. Can I get a motion to recommend or not recommend, please?
Move to recommend.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay, the seeing then, the motion is to recommend the Warren Article, Abenaki Ski Area Capital Reserve Fund Funding. Leanne, please.
Bob Toffa.
Yes.
Carol Packer.
Yep.
John McDonald.
Yes.
Tom Bell.
Yes.
Bob Mulholland.
Yes.
Brian Black.
Yes.
Matt Plash.
Yes.
Bob Loman.
Yes.
Steve Johnson.
Yes.
Brian Duches.
Yes.
Passes ten, zero.
Okay, the motion to recommend the Abenaki Ski Area Capital Reserve Fund Funding passes on a vote of ten to zero. Tree removal and replacement expendable trust fund funding. To see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate the sum of twenty-five thousand dollars to be placed in the existing tree removal and replacement expendable trust fund, which as of December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, had a balance of fifty-five thousand, seven hundred and thirty-two dollars. Funds are under the custody of the trustee of the trust funds, where the selectmen designated as agents to expend. Can I get a second or a motion to recommend or not recommend? Excuse me.
Recommend.
Second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, seeing then, the motion is to recommend the tree removal and replacement expendable trust fund funding. Leanne, please.
Bob Toffa.
Yes.
Carol Packer.
Yep.
John McDonald.
Yes.
Tom Bell.
Yes.
Bob Mulholland.
Yes.
Brian Black.
Yes.
Matt Plash.
Yes.
Bob Loman.
Yes.
Steve Johnson.
Yes.
Brian Duches.
Yes.
Vote to recommend ten, zero.
Okay, the motion to recommend the tree removal and replacement expendable trust fund funding passed on a vote of ten to zero. Public Safety Building Final Upfitting Cost. To see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate the sum of one hundred seventy-five thousand dollars for the purpose of final upfitting of the public safety building project, and to authorize the use of that amount of December thirty-first. Restricted fund balance for this purpose. The amount required represents the interest earned on bond proceeds for the public safety building project. Can I get a motion to recommend or not recommend?
Motion to recommend.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Okay, the motion is to recommend the public safety building final upfitting cost. Leanne, please.
Bob Toffa.
Yes.
Carol Packer.
Yep.
John McDonald.
Yes.
Tom Bell.
Yes.
Bob Mulholland.
Yes.
Brian Black.
Yep.
Matt Plash.
Yes.
Bob Loman.
Yes.
Steve Johnson.
Yes.
Brian Duches.
Yes.
Vote to recommend passes ten, zero.
Okay, the motion to recommend the public safety building final upfitting cost passed on a ten to zero vote. Okay, discontinued capital reserve funds. To see if the town will vote to discontinue the following. Two thousand and one, Parks and Rec Foxfield Building CFR, CRF, excuse me, three hundred and seventy-one dollars. Two thousand and one, Town Office Facility, CRF, two hundred and seven dollars. Two thousand and two, the Wolfborough Public Library, CRF, twenty dollars. Twenty thirteen, twenty fifteen, Abenaki Lodge, two thousand six hundred and ninety-three dollars. Said funds and accumulated interest to date of withdrawal are to be transferred to the municipality's general fund and designated fund balance. Can I get a motion to recommend or not recommend?
Move to recommend.
Second? Any discussion? Okay, seeing then, the motion is to recommend the discontinued capital reserve funds. Leanne, please.
Bob Toffa.
Yes.
Carol Packer. John McDonald.
Yes.
Tom Bell.
Yes.
Bob Mulholland.
Yes.
Brian Black.
Yes.
Matt Plash.
Yes.
Tom Loman.
Yep.
Oh, my God. Bob Loman.
Yes.
Steve Johnson.
Yes.
Brian Duches.
Yes.
Oh, vote to, oh, my God. Motion to recommend passes ten, zero.
Okay, the motion to recommend the discontinued reserve funds passed on a vote of ten to Okay, this next one, Jim, the increase in income limits to elderly tax exemptions, I don't believe we have to address that.
You do not need to vote on this. I did check our previous one that we did, and you have not voted on this in the past.
According to my paperwork, that was a last Warren article?
That's correct.
Do we have any comments from the public? Bobby? No? Okay, come up, please.
Hello, Bobby Budden. I just want to reiterate a statement that I made last evening, based on one Warren article in particular. But I'd just like to address the fact that the operating budget Warren article belongs to the Budget Committee. Is that true?
Yes.
So, the language in that Warren article is your language? And you can alter it in any way you want before you vote on that? You can reopen it for a vote?
We can reopen it if someone brings it up at the next session. The deliberative session.
So, the hearing tonight, you could reopen the vote and re-vote on that Warren article? And adjust the Warren article?
It's my understanding, we vote on the Warren articles, and the next information we'll take from the public, where we'll vote again, is during the deliberative session.
But it's your Warren article, so you can still re-word that Warren article.
Okay, what would you like to do, Bobby?
Okay, I'm going to encourage you again, based on Article twenty-three last year, where the voters reiterated from two thousand and two that we were going to buy down the surplus in the unassigned fund balance. I would like to encourage you again to buy down some of this debt in this Warren article